Call to order, the regular meeting of the Dickinson City Commission. Let the record show, we're missing one Commissioner, Vice President Jason Frederick. First item up is the Order of Business. Mr. Gah, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Thank you, President Decker. There are no changes.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Gah on the Order of Business? I look for a motion on the Order of Business. We have a motion to approve the Order of Business.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none will vote. All in favor of the Order of Business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the Consent Agenda Commissioners wish to discuss? I look for a motion on the Consent Agenda.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. With a second. Any further questions, comments for staff on the Consent Agenda? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We do have one item that is on timetable this evening at 5:00. That'll be a public hearing. So we'll move right into the non-time table. And the first item up is the 2019 Budget Amendment and Incumbrances. And this will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Before you is a resolution to amend, and the first amendment is for the expenditures for the Future Fund. And what this would be is a transfer from our General Fund to the investment fees, for the investment fees, that we never know exactly what would be for those fees for the year. And for that, it says that we budgeted $280,000. That is what we normally approximate, because we can use 4% that comes back, so that'd be 280, well, our budget, excuse me, the amount deposited in our Future Fund was a little bit higher. So it came in at 288,569. And then adding our fees of $18,708. We have a total expenditures of 307. So we're asking for a 30,000 amendment to bring to our budget, 310 to offset the additional expenses. That would be our only budget amendment for the year of 2019. For our incumbrances, this is, an encumbrance is a reservation of the prior year's appropriation for a specific item. Incumbrances are unfilled purchases, commitments, that are used for specific projects, contracted purchases, or services budgeted in one year but used in the next year. So I'll go through the list for the public. First encumbrance would be for animal control. That is the fund. This is for electrical work by Burger Electric for kennel repairs. And the funds out of the operating supply in 19 would support that, and that'd be for $6,000. For the museum, the storage case transport budgeted in 19, out of their exhibit equipment supply line, that's 7,500, and that is for cases that they have been getting from the other federal offices that have been closing down or moving. And so we just, what we do is we don't buy the actual cases, we just pay for the transport. And that will help us with our exhibits that we have there, and for the federal repository conditions that we have for our museum. The other one is for the helicopter lift expense, which is, was not used last year. We just want to encumber it for this year. Hopefully, we can get the lift for that, and that's $7,500. The repairs for the Burlington Northern and Santa Fe Depot, that's in the outpost park, needs to be restructured. They couldn't get to it due to the weather conditions. So we want to bring that one forward for this year and complete that, and that's for $10,000. And then we have mold, exhibit mold that comes from Serbia. We had one that was two years ago. We have one in, first payment was done in November of 18. It takes a little over a year, so this spring, the second payment will be due. We want to encumber that money over to be able to make that second payment, and that's $6,400. For HR and legal in 2019, this would be for the HR department. With NeoGov, we had money set aside to be able to do the conference for their new equipment that we, the modular, we're going to get for NeoGov for the HR department. We had set aside some money to be able to go to that conference, so they could, they could not do it last year, because we took a little bit more time in budgeting and stuff, and we couldn't get it in. So we want to do it for this year, which would be $7,000. And that would be for their conference travel and motel. Wastewater, there was a, there is a bid that's going to be presented to you for the sewer camera. This, the 30,000 that we're asking here is, a portion of that bid came over. And they have 180,000 that has been appropriated for this sewer camera trailer project, which is on a five-year lease. The 30,000 is a little bit extra. They had cash reserved last year for that. They didn't get it done last year. So we're just moving 30,000 over when the bid is approved. Police budget, has, had a budget in 19 to help the animal shelter cost. Again, this is to help for the, some of the repairs. And that is on the dog kennel project, which includes separation walls and concrete slabs and things. So that is 15,000 that they had there to continue that project for that. Fleet Internal Services, they had budgeted an AC machine as a capital item in 19, but could not purchase it until '20. So we are just moving that money over, which is 5,500. The wastewater treatment plant is for the septic receiving station, reuse booster work that needs to be done. They had a budget of 400,000 in 19. They only were able to do a little bit due to conditions. So we're just asking for that to be moved over in '20 for 343,000 to complete that project. So with that, with one budget amendment of 30,000, and then the items that I just listed for the incumbrances, staff is recommending approval of the 2019 Budget Amendment and incumbrances presented by Resolution Number, it'd be 06-2020, I believe.
That's correct. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on the budget amendment and the incumbrances for 2020?
So to summarize, it's just a $30,000 increase from what was originally--
Correct, for the budget amendment, correct. We usually have that on every year, because we don't know what the fees are going to be.
Any other questions for Mrs. Carlson? This is Resolution 06-2020. There are no other questions. I'd look for a motion on the resolution.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve 06-2020.
Second.
With a second. Any further questions, comments for staff? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. The next item up is the Amendment to the Actuarial Services Consulting Agreement, and that'll be handled again by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Before you is the amended Actuary Service Consulting Agreement that was put in your packet. And the agreement before you is an amendment to the current agreement, which was dated May 7th of 2019. The current agreement termination clause ended on December 31st of 2019, even though it wasn't signed till May. The proposed amendment would extend the termination clause until December 30th, 31st of 2020. The Retirement Board was presenting this amendment on their quarterly meeting, which was held January 29th, and was passed to adopt the amendment. With that, staff is requesting the approval of the amended termination clause of, the amended Actuary Service Consulting Agreement.
Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on this amendment to this agreement? And this agreement is with Gallagher Benefit Services Incorporated. And as Mrs. Carlson stated, this was presented to the Retirement Board and voted on by the Retirement Board to bring this forward to us. So if there are no questions, comments, I'd look for a motion on this amendment.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up is an RFP. I guess this is the approve the format for a compensation study, and this will be presented by Mr. Gah.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. At the February 4th work session, we discussed, continued some ongoing discussions as to a pay plan. And at that time, the consensus was to have the staff develop an RFP and look for outside consultation. So in front of you, you have that draft that would be sent out to, specifically, I want to highlight the scope of work. This would be called a classification and compensation study, and would consist of four tasks. The first being to conduct a comprehensive compensation study using comparable agencies, not only job titles, but duties and responsibilities by reviewing job descriptions. This is something that came up quite a little bit. So compensation tied directly to job description review. Number two, perform a benefit study, using again those same comparable agencies, to include shares of insurance premiums, vacation leave, holiday, sick leave, and any additional benefits. Number three would be to recommend the changes to the present city's compensation structure, and then develop and recommend an implementation plan for the proposed plan and salary adjustments to include a estimated budget impact. So if you have any questions or comments on that, that scope of work, or anything you think we need to add to that, if approved tonight, we'll send out to consultants here in the next week or so, and we'll look to see what we hear.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Gah on this? I'll get the term right here. Classification and Compensation Study. And this is an RFP, which is a request for proposals. And when is the due date on this, Mr. Gah? The 24th of March?
March, correct.
Any questions for Mr. Gah or staff?
It looks pretty well encompassed of everything that we should need to make a pretty good decision on. I would move we approve.
We have a motion to approve. With a second. Any further questions, comments for staff? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up is a cost of living allowance for 2020. This again will be handled by City Administrator Gah.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. This also came from the same discussion of the pay study where the RFP came from, and that was to bring forth some options. We provided you some numbers after that meeting, and this is a resolution showing kind of a draft, showing that if you, you gave a cost of living allowance, when that could happen. Probably the best-case scenario would be start this the next pay period. A couple of options that came up would be a 3% across the board. If that was started at the next pay period, that would be 413,000 and around $500. If you went the 4% across the board, starting in the next pay period, 523,700. Another option we threw out there, we've heard a little bit, I think it's a little more cumbersome, but what if we made this retroactive to the first of the year? And if we did a 3% to the first of the year, that would be just under 480,000. So we were, staff basically recommended either doing the 3% retroactive or the 4% now is pretty close to the same, same amount.
Thank you, Mr. Gah. Any questions for Mr. Gah or comments? I remember in the, the work session, I don't think we discussed a 4%. We had discussed making it retroactive.
Mr. President, you know, with the advice, you know, of beginning on February 23rd, you know, which takes us, I mean, not quite a quarter of 2020 yet, but I would have no problem with the 4% COLA. That does, it gets the bottom line up for everybody without us having to go into each individual job and saying, this is where it should be, or whatever. I think over the years, we've been, you know, maybe around 2% COLA or something like that. And I think 4% is in effect a way that we can get some of their salaries up there to where we want it to be, you know. It's still a savings overall of $368,000. So, you know, it's a good job of still saving money, but being able to compensate our employees. And I'm sure when the next budget comes up in August again, that that's one thing that'll be on your mind, that, you know, here's what we can do. Keep in mind that we did have a 4% cost of living back in February. So, you know, personally, I would be in favor of the 4% cost of living.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Trustum.
I reviewed the data that was provided to us on December 20th from Rayanne Kellen. And in that, she provides the average market compared to the 2019 grade. And I do think that the 4% does bring many of those positions closer to that average market that was established during that research. So I would be a proponent of the 4% as well.
The one thing we have to take into consideration, because I don't think this was in Ms. Kellen's study, is the health benefit we are providing, and how much of a percentage that is. And I know that the health benefit does not get to everyone, and only five years or, or more get the health benefit. So I initially supported the 3%. I'm, I'm still on board with 3%. Again, I don't know if I'm for the retroactive, but what I'm hearing is the 4% from at least two of the Commissioners. Seems to be the way. Ms. Walla, any?
I guess I was going more towards the 3%. That's more savings, plus the annual average is 1.6% for COLA increase, so it's still way above the average, when you look at it that way.
Plus the health benefit.
Right. And then they have that on top of it.
Mr. President, what brought me to my decision was really going back to the beginning of this entire process of, our goal was to find market comparisons and bring us within markets. So our employees are getting paid compared to, or similar to what other positions are in other communities. I think the, for me, the 4% isn't as much about COLA, but more about bringing those employees closer to that market. And when looking at some of that data, many of these positions are just very much under that average market. So that's why I feel comfortable with the 4%.
Mr. President, I agree with that 100%. I don't, you know, in terms of what's been happening here over the last few months, I mean, I don't look at it as really as a COLA, but an increase in their pay, which--
Moving the scale. Okay, but that would go into effect, Mr. Gah, February 23rd?
Yes.
The 4%, and would not be retroactive?
Mr. President, if you're comfortable, I'm ready to make a motion.
I am. Unless, Commissioners, you have anything more?
Mr. President, I move to approve a 4% COLA increase.
Second.
Go ahead. Effective February 23rd? Okay. 4% effective February 23rd. Mr. Steiner?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Trustum to approve a 4% effective February 23rd, 2020, with a second by Commissioner Steiner. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
No.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries, and I'll just explain myself a little bit. Even though I prefer the 3%, I think it is the right thing to do now with Mr. Frederick not here, and we need to get something done for these employees. We stated from the get-go that we are doing this to be competitive in this region, and we have a lot of hard-working employees for the City of Dickinson. And I hope we can retain all of them. So, that motion carries, and that'll be effective February 23rd, 2020. Last item up for administration is a tobacco license for, the tobacco dealer license for Salt of the Earth LLC. And Mr. Gah?
Yes, this is fairly simple. Salt of the Earth, 44 West Villard, just to be a new tobacco dealer, and staff recommends approval.
And they are aware of all the new federal regulations?
We would hope so, as far as anybody is.
Any questions for Mr. Gah on this tobacco dealer license for Salt of the Earth?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the application for Salt of the Earth LLC.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries, approve the tobacco license for Salt of the Earth. We'll move on to public safety. We have nothing from the Fire Department this evening. We do have a annual report from the Police Department. Chief Dossinger.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Commission. I'm before you tonight to present the 2019 Annual Report of the Dickinson Police Department. In front of you, you should have a booklet in front of you, kind of providing a synopsis of what's going on in our, what went on within the Dickinson Police Department in 2019. Myself and some staff members tonight are going to provide a snapshot and kind of some highlights of some of the major activities and departments and activity levels that we've seen in 2019. For the last 10 years, I've been very honored to provide leadership to the department as in the form of a police chief. I've got a very good group of men and women, both sworn and non-sworn, that work very hard every day, providing a safe place for the citizens, citizens of our community to live, work, and play. Our mission statement is committed to public safety through exceptional service and community partnerships. The Dickinson Police Department prides itself with working with the community and interacting with them. The community members is our eyes and ears out there. We rely on them to report suspicious activities and to get the ball rolling, obviously, for things that they witness. We enjoy interacting with the public and hosting community events. On this weekend, for example, we hosted the Skate with the Cop event over at the ICE Arena. That was a huge hit for us. Very good interaction. We enjoy working with the youth in our community, and we'll touch on some of those aspects, and we talk about the School Resource Officer Program later on in the presentation. The structure of the Dickinson Police Department, right now, we're allocated to have 42 and a half sworn members of our department. The half-member is a part-time retired sergeant from our police department that works as court security, here in municipal court on Thursdays. We do have 21 non-sworn positions. Those encompass our records division, our dispatch center, and our criminal analyst Changes from 2019 to 2020, in 2020, we were allocated to hire an additional school resource officer moving forward into 2020. So that will give us the total of three school resource officers in the Dickinson public school system in 2020. Those are the only changes to staffing allocations from 2019 to our existing year. Our dispatch center in 2019 was kind of a year of a transition in our public safety answering point. For 26 years, Dana Becker was in charge and supervised our dispatch staff. She had retired in 2019, and we had hired Liz Okerson as their public safety support specialist to lead the dispatch unit. We are allocated to have 12 full-time dispatchers in our dispatch center. 2019, we faced manpower challenges in our dispatch center. For the majority of the time, we were operating between eight to 11 full-time dispatchers due to a variety of reasons. In 2019, our dispatchers answered 9,916 911 calls for service, and a little over 58,632 calls for non-emergency calls. Those would be such calls as calls for non-emergency calls that weren't required to dial 911, but they'd be such things as property accidents, dog-related calls, that, that type of thing. We also offered, answered 27 text messages as well for emergency services, which was something new for us in 2019, that technology. Our records division, in addition to their daily duties of records, such as open records requests, providing copies of accident reports and copies of incident reports, they also do sex offender registration updates. In 2019, they did 311 sex offender registration updates. They also are in charge of reviewing alarm calls in our community. There's 461 alarm calls that they reviewed. If it's an employee error or user error, they are, our community is billed for that. If it's an actual call for service, they are not. In addition to registration updates, our dispatch center, I'm sorry, our records division also provides fingerprinting services, and they fingerprinted 455 people in 2019 as well. Our animal control, as you know, the Dickinson Police Department manages the animal shelter and the animal control division within our community. In 2019, we impounded 733 animals. 323 of those were cats, and 404 of those were dogs. If you add them numbers up, you realize it doesn't add up to 733. So there's obviously other animals that we impound as well, such as rabbits, a number of other things, reptiles, and other things that we have to deal with on a regular basis as well. In 2019, unfortunately, we did have to euthanize eight animals, less than 1% of the total animals that we had impounded, due to illnesses or aggression-related issues or just extreme poor health conditions. Our total budget in 2019 was, as you could see, was $5,570,000 and 810 cents. Majority of those costs are related to labor and operational side of things. Some of the grants that we had wrote and were successful in 2019, one that we are, we get usually on an annual basis is the Department of Transportation grants, which allows us to perform such activities as underage drinking, distracted driving, impaired driving, inadequate protection. Those grants, we are allowed to put extra staff on in this space for the overtime for them to target those enforcement activities. Other grants that we were successful in was the Department of Justice vest grants, the state homeland security grants, which allows us to provide special vests to our tactical team, and also allowed us to purchase a pole camera for our tactical team in 2019. Other grants was the Burlington Northern and Santa Fe Railway Grant, which we were able to get our drone project-- to get our drone project by moving forward in 2019. So, at this time, I turn it over to Captain Siani, and he's going to touch on our patrol division.
Good evening. Not sure if you guys want to pause for the 5:00 timetable, or if you want me to continue on?
I think we better, since it is a public hearing, we better move into that. So, thank you for the catch. I was so enthralled by the presentation, I forgot about 5:00.
The last time we had a...
Yeah, I know, I know. We're just going to put you guys on a timetable from now on. You don't have to compete, you have your own time hack. All right. We do have a public hearing, 5:00, public hearing for parking ordinance amendment, and this will be handled by City Attorney Winko.
Thank you, Mr. President, commissioners. This is a public hearing and a second reading on the proposed ordinance regarding the parking viol... excuse me, the parking ordinance. Last meeting, as we had discussed it, this does change and alter Section 2356 to 90 of the city's code, which does add an additional section for enforcement with regard to having recreational vehicles on city streets in conjunction with the police department as well as public works. Felt that this was necessary and important for us, for the city, excuse me, to be able to maintain streets and roadways during the winter months. And Commissioner Steiner, at the last meeting, had suggested that and made the motion to amend the ordinance as it was initially presented from October 15th to November 1st. So, that was the change that we had made. So, now, as it currently reads, it would prohibit the parking from November 1st to March 31st, again, related to recreational vehicles for the ability to deal with snow removal and whatnot during the winter months. And I would take any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Mrs. Winko. Any questions for Mrs. Winko on this amendment? This is totally separate than the other one we were dealing with, with cars inside of garages and...
Correct, your honor, sorry. Court mode.
Well, I stepped up in the...
So, yes.
Pay raise?
Yeah.
Mr. President, correct. Yes, this is completely separate, and typically, we don't have two parking ordinances on the same agenda, but this is completely separate.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Winko. Any other questions for Mrs. Winko on parking ordinance? This is amended, as she stated, from the previous reading to a new... to November 1st. So, commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? If not, I will open the public hearing. Seeing there are no questions from commissioners for staff, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that has any concerns about the new parking ordinance dealing with recreational vehicles left in city streets from November 1st to March 31st? Anyone from the public, any concerns? Anyone from the public with any concerns of the new parking ordinance? Seeing no one from the public has any concerns, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, let me... I'm going to pull up here what... This should be ordinance 1688, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
1688. So, this is ordinance 1686. It has a number.
Oh, that's correct. It is, it's going to exist.
Oh, okay, we did, from the first reading.
Second reading, correct.
Okay.
We'll approve, Mr. President.
So, this is 1686, and we have a motion to approve. All right, and a second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. All right, Captain Siani?
All right, good evening once again. I'm going to be covering the patrol division and also the K-9 division along with the SRO programs, starting with the patrol division and the calls for service. Patrol division includes 28 sworn members of Dickinson Police Department. They're broken up into four shifts, working 12 hours a day, from 6:00 to 6:00, from day shift to night shift. There are seven officers assigned to each crew. Calls for service in 2019, we ended up with 28,134 calls for service. These calls encompass anything from a barking dog to a accident to a PR stop by an officer. Basically, a tracking system for our records management system. You have a snapshot here that shows a seven-year window, all the way back from 2013. Something that should be noted here is we changed our records management system in February of 2016. So, some of the how we record things changed a little bit, and what we're actually tracking changed a little bit. So, there's a little bit of deviation from 2016 through 2019, but we stabilized from 2018 to 2019. Our calls for service are pretty close to within just under 400 calls between the two years. So, I think we're doing well, maintaining some consistency for our calls for service. I think I skipped one. Some of these calls for service, here's a list, basically an overview of the calls for service that we have covered. Some of the things that stand out in this is the theft and fraud remains one of the higher numbers for 634 for 2019, and domestic violence calls, 520. Those are pretty consistent as being our two major areas that we cover a lot of. These are basically non-officer-initiated calls, so they're actually called in for us. Some of these other calls in here include officer-initiated calls, such as traffic stops and things like that. Another interesting number is the animal-related calls, 1,747 animal-related calls that we're handling. Not only the patrol officers, but that goes into animal control as well. Warrants are another one. That seems we have a lot of warrants that the officers end up covering, 541 for those. Some of the other numbers you can review on your own, and gives you a pretty good overview. A lot of agency assists. Some of the agency assists are cellular phone dumps. We have... we do that for surrounding agencies.
Captain Siani, or, yeah, Captain Siani, going back to the weapon shots fired or heard at 39, if you have one weapon shot and three, four people call in, you call it as one? Is that one, or does it count as four?
It would count as four if we had individual calls for service on that, as long as they were coded. A lot of times, those won't be coded as a call for service individually if it's obviously from the same location.
Four calls.
Correct.
Kind of sounds like we could be the Wild West, but let me explain it now.
Yeah, a lot of times, you can't verify whether it's actually shots called or not, shots fired or not. A lot of times, it's fireworks that the public is assuming are shots fired, so.
Thank you.
We get into the enforcement efforts here. 2019, the officers actually conducted 5,434 traffic stops. That's officer-initiated. Out of those traffic stops, there were 2,188... Excuse me, that's 2018. There's 1,834 citations issued as compared to 2,188 in 2018. We had 3,092 warnings issued and 586 parking violations issued. Some of those breakdowns include citations. The one, the speeding on the right, 603 citations were issued for speeding, 293 for registration, 208 for insurance, care required, 147, and 88 for seat belts. Now, this isn't just an exclusive list, it's just the breakdown of some of the more prevalent stops. And some of the... As far as vehicle crashes, we ended up with 963 total, which is pretty similar in comparison to the previous year. What stands out the most here is we actually had two fatalities here in 2019, unfortunately. Property accidents ended up being 693. We had four pedestrian-related accidents, 43 injury-related accidents, and then 221 hit-and-runs. Going into the K-9 unit, 2019 brought a lot of changes to the K-9 unit. We did lose our K-9 coordinator, Cory Lee, who was elected sheriff, which ended up bringing our K-9 numbers down to two teams. We had three in 2018, one dual-purpose and two single-purpose K-9s, with Sergeant Lee's departure that retired out his dual-purpose K-9. And actually, Jaden Peters took over the K-9 program, and his dual-purpose K-9, Kalo, make up the team here. Troy Mahusky also took over K-9 Norman from Hunter Easterling, who is now in investigations. So, we're down to two teams, one dual-purpose, one single-purpose. In February, both K-9 teams attended USPCA certifications, which hosted 13 K... Sorry about that. In April, DPD hosted the annual NPCA narcotic certification. We hosted 13 K-9 teams. Both DPD teams scored a perfect 100 points in that event. In July, K-9 Kalo and Corporal Peters attended the NPCA Patrol Certification in Bismarck. He certified for his dual-purpose status. In August, K-9 Kalo and Corporal Peters attended the Annual North Dakota Peace Officers Association. Corporal Peters and K-9 Kalo came in second place out of the nine teams that competed. In September, K-9 Kalo and Corporal Peters attended the Midwest K-9 Alternative Patrol Certification, which was held by... hosted by the Stark County Sheriff's Department, where he certified there as well. Of the numbers, patrol... Corporal Peters and K-9 Kalo had 13 patrol activations where they actually went into some capacity of patrol K-9, where they either searched for a bad guy or do something other than searching for drugs. In public relations, Kalo had 35, and Norman had 25 events they attended, narcotics searches, 72 for Kalo, and Norman had 60. Pretty good numbers for a two-man team. The SRO, that's a beast of itself. We have two SROs assigned, Sergeant Brandon Stocky and Senior Patrol Officer Tiffany Winery. Sergeant Stocky is assigned to the high school, and Tiffany is assigned to the middle school. They dealt with 43 tobacco violations in 2019 between the two schools, 33 disorderly conduct charges. Numbers are steadily increasing. If you break that down into the two schools, there were 30 tobacco violations in Dickinson High School, 13 in Dickinson Middle School. Sergeant Stocky is also in charge of most of our community programs, including the DARE program. We expanded the DARE program in 2019, bringing in fifth graders. So, we're teaching fifth-grade DARE and seventh-grade DARE, two sessions. We brought in two more DARE officers to accomplish that. The SCRAM program was kicked off, the Surveillance Camera Registration and Mapping Program, which is in the works as we speak. Another notable event for 2019 was our National Night Out. We had over 600 in attendance there, which basically leads us into Sergeant Slouser and the CID. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Captain Siani? Thank you.
How we doing on timetable, Steph?
No, we're good. We're good. You guys got free rein for this.
Okay.
Rest of the...
Commissioners, Mayor, thank you, guys, for another year coming up, being able to speak with you. You see, I got a group behind me here this afternoon, this evening, and the reason I brought this group down here with me was I've yet to do that, and I'm sure they're red in the face right now, and they're loving me for making them do this this year. But I think it's a testament to the police department on the group that runs in the investigative division for a few different reasons. Number one, these are... almost everybody here you may recognize, may not, I'll talk about them in just a second, but they're tenured members of our department, and you guys have chose to spend a lot of money on these guys. There's a lot of training invested into them. And maybe the biggest thing at all for me that I can put out at you is when the red buttons hit and the time is to go, and we have these major incidents, these are the men and the women, the names in the paper a lot of times. You don't see, you know, they're not driving the squad cars in uniform and seeing them around waving from time to time. And so, I just think it's important for you to see their faces and what they're doing right now, because, again, a lot of times, they're behind the computer screen and doing a lot of that stuff that you may not. But first up, Pat here is just going to be Corporal Detective Lyons. He's going to be our longest tenure to the group. Currently, what you guys, it's worth knowing, is he's the first member of the Dickinson Police Department to be federally deputized with the FBI Task Force, working with the violent crimes against children. And so, he is the guy that's out there to catch a predator, quote-unquote, doing that stuff. And I've said this about Travis a little bit, he's probably saved more children's lives, more children's lives than anybody else in the history of the Dickinson Police Department with his impact on crimes against children and his arrests and such. So, he also does a little bit of the Virtua Instruction, which is our virtual reality system up there, and is in charge in lieu of my absence, when I'm gone. So, thanks, Trav. The next one is Detective Samantha Oki. Sam here, she oversees our entire crisis negotiation team. We have eight members that do our CNT team. She's a DARE instructor and one of our ICAC operators as well. So, she's in the schools doing some drug talks, does a lot of presentations. We like to send her out. The people like to see her face as opposed to some of ours, right? And so, her and Travis, I qualify them as our cybercrimes duo of sorts. They are our quasi-cybercrimes unit as we move into that realm in 2020, which is going to be a large part of our workload, a heavy, heavy portion of it. So, thanks, Sam. Next one's going to be Casey Brosten, and Casey comes at us. He's one of your guys' SWAT team members here locally. He does firearms instructors, one of the few in the department that does firearms instruction. He's also our less lethal munitions instructor, so he gets us up to speed on gas deployments and stuff like that, and beanbag rounds and things like that that you can envision in the less lethal world, and handles general investigations with us right now. And he's also a virtual instructor with our virtual reality system that we have up there that you guys have seen. So, thanks, Case. Hunter Easterling, he was unable to make it tonight. You guys may be know Hunter. He was referenced in the K-9 thing earlier by Captain Siani, but he oversees our sex offender program, does our SWAT team, he's our bike patrol coordinator, general investigations as well. And then, we have Cory Wallace, she's here. Step up Cory there, smile. Cory's going on a little bit of a long weekend. We had a few call-outs, we had some overdoses over the weekend. She's running on E right now. I'll talk about that here in just a little bit. But anyways, she's our first aid person in health. She works for the M.T. on the side here in Dickinson for the Dickinson Ambulance Services. She's one of our DARE instructors, she's on the CNT team, and then handles all those drug, major drug investigations that you see those numbers on, on the screen there. So, she's a busy lady for us. So, thanks, Cory. And then, last but not least, is our, that analyst position that Captain Siani referenced, Janelle. Janelle, she's shy, she doesn't... Do I got to... Am I going to have to talk? But no, but this investment by the city has paid over and over and over in the first 12 months. I can't explain to you in any words how great this position, her position, has been for us. It has helped solve as many crimes as any licensed peace officer probably could have solved for us. So, she is the human computer. She's the person on the computer doing all of these nexuses and doing the super-secret squirrel stuff that, you know, we sometimes laugh and joke about or you see on TV. But she's assigned in a dual role with the PD and the task force, and because of that in itself, it has helped solve, I'll just say, dozens of cases that would not have happened had she not been in that position and communicating at a level that the City of Dickinson has not ever had before. So, definitely been worth its while, and she's a huge, huge asset for us. Thanks, Janelle. And so, you know, the last, in 2019, CID was pretty much on par for 2018 numbers-wise. We didn't have a huge spike in our overall cases that we investigated. However, the big one, I want you to take note on there in the bottom, and that's total call-outs being 85. One guy that I didn't get into tonight because he had to leave... One guy that I didn't get into tonight because he had to leave is Taylor Peters. And he got called out while we were just here, a child abuse case he's got to go look into and try to help a kid. And I think that that's important because those call-outs there, those are after-hours incidents, major incidents, that these women and women are getting called out to come and help with search warrants, again, the red button and the major headlines that you guys see in the paper. And so they, to put it in perspective, when I first started, going on 12 years ago in Investigations, when I first started, we were at 30 call-outs for a year. And so now we're at 85. And so over once a week, we are getting called out on major things, if you do the 52 weeks and the math on 85 there. But a heavy load for us, to get to, I think for you guys to understand and the citizens is, is the cyber world that we are entering into in 2020, very labor-intensive cases, very, very, take a lot of time, take a lot of search warrants, and we invest a large part of our, an increasing amount of our daily duties to stuff that's related to the internet and in the cyber world, and the electronic devices that are involved in almost every case it seems like anymore, and the downloading of those devices and such. And so we, as we move forward, that's definitely a focus for us. It's going to be a costly thing, I think, for the city, just to plant that seed moving forward, and what we're going to need to invest in, in training and bodies and such. But some of that's not too new to you guys, as it affects a lot of other areas and professions here, here in the area too. So, anybody have any questions on that so far that I could answer?
Any questions for Detective Klausert?
Just put the major crimes up there in front of you so you can get a look at those real quick. The bottom one there, the murder one, obviously it's a nice number to see at the bottom, 2019-0. We did have some close calls, there were some close calls there, but obviously not to the full extent of what the law defines there. But, you know, Captain Ciani talked about a large part up here on the theft that you guys can see, and that bears a big part on top of the computer stuff, probably our two biggest portions that take up our workload. And so the thing about that number that I think to understand is the majority of those from our end are, they're crimes of opportunity for our citizens. Our citizens are great people, and it's a great place to live, and most of the time they're taken advantage of by somebody because they didn't lock the door of their vehicle, they didn't lock their tools up in the back of the vehicle, things like that. So a big portion of those are just crimes of opportunity. And so as we continue into 2020, Captain Ciani and I kind of visited about the plan of attack on some awareness, hopefully, and our community resource officers bringing some more attention to that. So any other questions on those I could answer for you? Or additional questions? The arrest numbers, they're at the bottom. You see the two differences there from 18 to 19, a couple hundred extra. And so maybe statistically insignificant on the adult end, but a majority of them are activities in the school. And so I'm not going to speak on, most of those are handled by our SROs, and it would be more appropriate for Captain Ciani or them to answer those. But I think that that is something worth taking away from that slide, is the activities in the schools have increased significantly. And then getting into just a couple more slides here, we've got the Task Force. Corey Wallace, she was up here just a little bit ago, they were busy 2019, they had 137 cases. That's up from 88 the year before. And so if you do the math, on a 600 grams of meth seized there at the bottom, it's about a pound and a half of meth if you look at it in those terms. And then you see over here on the side, I mean, obviously it's significant enough that we're bringing it up to you guys here, but the impact on the fentanyl in the area and what's present in the area, 270 dose units. We just had some over the weekend. I think that they're going to sort through and figure out if it's going to be related to fentanyl and/or heroin, but continues to be a growing concern for us and what our officers are dealing with and what our drug task force is dealing with there. And so they talked in 2019, what's kind of nice, there's some cool technology out there, and they were able to get their hands on it, it's Truenarc, you see, second line of the second paragraph there. And that is a device that allows them to test this stuff and to be able to make sure, you know, to see what they are, what's in front of them, so they don't have to, you know, maybe open up a bag or, you know, put themselves out there, expose themselves in a biohazard sort of situation where 10, 15 years ago it might have been more the case with some of the testing methods. So they have that on hand right now, and that works really well for them, particularly when you're talking fentanyl and heroin and such. So, and then it backtracks just what I said at the very beginning. Janelle Grohl, who is in here, she's also been a big part of the success that you see on some of the numbers up there that are also in your handouts because of her communication between the Task Force and the PD. So, any questions on the drug task force that I could maybe answer for you? Or bring Corey up here and make her answer for you? So, okay. And then last but not least, get a plug-in on Badlands Crime Stoppers. Last year, we were able to get that up and running, and so 32 tips received. We'd like to see that $1,000 cash reward a little bit higher than what it was, but the fact of the matter is, out of those 32 tips, a majority of those people did not want rewards. They used the service of Badlands Crime Stoppers and the anonymity of that program, and when asked about the rewards and such, they did not want rewards. And so, to what extent, it was noticeable in some regards, we just couldn't get back in touch with them. But we're hopeful to really jumpstart this into 2020, as we just invested into a tip 411 facet of it that is an application. We'll be back up in front of you guys here in another couple weeks to talk about that with the Badlands Crime Stoppers Board of Directors and Committee. So, anyhow, that would be the extent of what I have for you guys, as I go into Lieutenant Handel, unless anybody has any additional questions for us, or for me.
Any questions? Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, President Decker and Commissioners. The last two items on here fall under my purview, so I'll just briefly touch on the tactical team. In 2019, we actually ended the year, which I suppose you could consider as a very positive thing, that we only had four technical call-outs, as we would call them. Two that we actually deployed on back-to-back over Labor Day weekend. One was a, involved a search warrant involving a weapon that we believe was involved, involving a violent suspect. He was taken to custody without incident. And the second one, the day after, was a mental health episode. The individual had hallucinations, thought somebody was in his apartment and began discharging a firearm. So we evacuated neighbor residents and were able to safely arrest that individual as well and get him, get him the help he needed. The other two, we actually didn't conduct a full deployment on, they canceled in route. One was a wide-area search for a suspect that fled from a traffic stop in Stark County. And the last one was a potential school violence threat that was called in up in Kildare. We got about, just outside the city limits and got called back on that one. So with that, that is rather comforting to know that, you know, our services weren't needed, we weren't experiencing that seriousness of crime in that respect over the, over the area, although it was the record-low number of call-outs that we've had since the SWAT team's inception. Currently, in 2019, we had 21 operators, both from the, or all from the police department, Stark County Sheriff's Office and Dunn County Sheriff's Office, along with 10 negotiators. We continue to train, and we have to train, as if calls as serious as those are on a monthly or daily basis. So in that, we train over 100 hours a year as a team. Membership on the team is strictly a volunteer basis, so these are the officers that are coming in on their, on their days off, obviously getting compensated for it, but that's an additional duty that they encumber, and their dedication I'm truly proud of, and it keeps our city and our region safe and gives us law enforcement agencies an alternate way of dealing with dangerous situations. Going forward in 2020, just some mentions that I'll make briefly, and hopefully in the next couple weeks, we're going to have a joint powers agreement in front of you for review with neighboring counties in Montana. We learned several years ago during a hunt for a murder suspect out in Ekalaka that it was very clunky getting our team deployed over there. There's a lot of, when you go interstate, there's a lot of use-of-force issues, liability, workman's comp, that sort of thing. So best avenue that we found, that's going to be the most advantageous, is entering a joint powers agreement. So we put a draft up in front of Trini Wanko, so hopefully we'll have that in front of you. Also this year, one of the projects we want to accomplish or finish is outfitting a up-armored Humvee that we received from military surplus. So zero cost of the taxpayers, minus the expense of getting it up here. We just got done with addictive truck equipment, doing a discounted paint job on it, so we have it, have it looking pretty now, and it'll just give us another barrier of security on scenes, having armor on two sides of the, of a structure. And the last item that we're slowly beginning to integrate into our team is the use of an interior drone. Drones, which is actually going to lead me into my next slide here in just a second, are really changing not only how SWAT teams are operating, but law enforcement in general. It's sending them into areas that even robots can potentially get hung up on, and they've been really negating the need for sending human bodies, like SWAT members, into structures. So unfortunately, I see our numbers even declining even further than what is up there as far as what SWAT needs to be deployed for. But that's, in essence, that's what we want to go for, is the safety of everybody involved with the use of technology. So the last thing that I have up here is our remote pilot unit, our drone unit. We've started last year, and we acquired our first drone, a Mavic Enterprise 2, through the use of a BNSF Railway Foundation grant. And since then, we have three officers, including myself, that have become FAA-certified to fly drones. And I know initially the concept of a drone, especially with law enforcement, kind of conjures up the surveillance-type aspect, but far from it from what we've used it for already. If it were to be a surveillance situation, that's strictly controlled not only by state law, but by policy, there's search warrants that are involved. So that part we really control in great detail, and we really don't envision that being the sole source of use for our unit. As you can see on the pie chart, the main use for it, we've used it a couple times with fire call-outs to help the fire department look for hot spots in buildings. We've used them on several occasions for accident reconstruction at the scenes of either fatal or serious injury crashes. We can later reconstruct the pictures we take into a three-year rendering for reconstruction. And then we've also used it on patrol assists. Anytime we've had suspects running on foot in a wide area, makes it a lot safer instead of officers chasing them off of foot and potentially getting ambushed, to be able to put that drone up and search for them that way. So those exigent types of circumstances. We've actually had our first success story a couple weeks ago. We had a suicidal juvenile out in Gladstone that left the house, wandered out, kind of literally into the middle of nowhere, and within a few minutes of putting the drone up, the juvenile had ultimately had said that he had heard the drone and knew he was caught, more or less cocked, or the gig was up, and he ultimately waited for deputies to make contact with him, just by hearing the drone up. So we were able to make contact with him, get him the help he needed that night. So that was a true success story of the drone so far. So the last but not least is our, want to make a plug-in for our website and our Facebook page. We're about 240 likes away from the 10,000 club on Facebook, so if you haven't liked our Facebook page, please do so or pass along to family and friends. Additionally, this report in front of you is in digital format tonight on our website, dickinsonpd.com, and shortly after we'll be posting, posting that on Facebook as well so the citizens can view which you have in front of you. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Chief Dussinger, unless you have any other questions on my portion.
Any questions for Lieutenant Handel? Thank you.
Well, thank you for allowing us to present an overview of our activity in 2019. I want to thank the community and the Commission for their continued support. We definitely enjoy the working relationship and the support we get from the Commission regarding public safety in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, just a comment here. I believe this is about my 20th annual report, and it always amazes me the amount of calls that your division or your department takes in. I mean, literally hundreds of thousands of calls, you know? And then when I think farther, not only your department, but City Hall, here, the amount of calls they, they take a year, and the fire department, the amount of calls that they take, our street department, the amount of calls. And it's literally hundreds of thousands of calls that the city takes. And, you know, it just amazes me every year how you guys handle those things and just compliment everybody involved.
Okay, we'll move into engineering. And the first item up is Apex Tax Order Amendment. And that is going to be handled by City Engineer Kubis.
Thank you, President Decker. This is a task order amendment for our 14th Street project. The construction of this project happened a couple of years ago with a contractor called Light Construction. And this task order amendment is for a few different things. It was a project that, by all accounts, didn't go the best. We believe the contractor lost a large sum of money. It wasn't a money-making deal for our consultant on this project, and it was a troublesome project for the city. The good thing is, the project is done, it's constructed to plan, but this amendment covers some costs for Apex. They spent over 1,000 extra hours out in the field, and that's part of this amount, the amount of $59,900. It was for the additional time in the field. And that's, just so you're aware, a write-off to our consultant of $66,000. The amount of $59,900 is equal to the amount of liquidated damages that the city received back from the contractor for the project not being completed on time. So that is really a wash in dollars. There's a cost of $10,000 for a water main that needed to be redesigned in the field that Apex did on the fly for us. And then there's a dollar amount of $27,200, which Apex spent, going through documentation that the contractor was sending to the city, making a claim for an additional $1 million that they wanted to be paid. That amount was not paid to the contractor. We had been able to settle with that contractor for around $400,000. So in effect, the $27,000 spent, going through records on the project, ultimately saved the city around $600,000. So the total amount of this task order, if I'm reading right, is $97,100. Staff has reviewed this task order amendment and would recommend approval. I'd stand open for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis on this task order amendment? Mr. Kubis, this should be final on this project.
This amount would be the final amount. We actually got an invoice for them. We intend to close it out in 2019 to help out future audits, so we're not dealing with this project lingering anymore.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Kubis or staff on this amendment? Now I'd look for a motion on this task order amendment.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Steiner.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Trustum. Any further questions, comments? Hearing non-hold vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is a task order for Highlands Engineering to design some pavement marking for Eighth Street South and State Avenue South. We've talked about this in the past, about potentially turning both of these streets into a road diet section that we're familiar with now, the three-lane section. Currently, both of these streets are striped as four-lane sections. Our intent would be to put a committee together of staff and Commission to decide which direction we want to go and turn Highlands loose on the design of whatever, whatever it is that the design, that this group would come up with. The task order itself is fairly straightforward, in the amount of $21,870. I've reviewed this task order. I believe the scope is commensurate with the fee and would recommend approval. Chad, I'd open it up for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis? You said this would be a committee put together or a board to include some of the Commissioners, because I know some of us have received calls on the proposed road diet.
I would certainly like that, yeah. If there's, there's been comments, I have feelings, but I think it's always better to get a group together and then come to an informed decision.
Any other questions, comments for Mr. Kubis? Now I'd look for a motion on the task order for Highlands. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Steiner.
Second.
With a second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing non-hold vote, Mr. Steiner? Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. The next item up is plat easement agreement. Mr. Kubis?
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. This was a plat that was actually approved a couple of months ago. Called the Evangelical Bible Church, or EBC plat. As part of that plat, they were intending to dedicate an easement to the north. So if you are familiar with the EBC church, it's on 6th Avenue West, the north part of town. And there is another parcel that was surveyed out years ago, and the intent was to have an easement reach that parcel. Well, the easement was outside of the boundary of the plat, which technically is not a very legal dedication of an easement. So we asked the owner to put that easement in a deed format, which they've done, and that's in your packet, and that's what we're asking to approve. So we have a legal deed that matches the easement that's on the parcel, that's on the plat, excuse me. We've reviewed that deed. City staff would recommend approval of that easement.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis on this easement agreement? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Trustum.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Walla. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Kubis, you have a concurrence of award for the Villard Street lighting project.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Although the title of the project in your packet was the Villard Street Lighting Project, if you remember, they included this micro-surfacing project in that bid, which is, will contain our road diet project that we've talked about quite a bit. Both of those projects, being on the Interstate Loop system, are an 80-10-10 match, not that 90-10-10 match I was talking about the other meeting. So the engineer's estimate was around 8% under the bid. So this bid was about 8% over the engineer's estimate. Per the agreement of this grant that we had received, the state funds are fixed at, it says in the letter, $1.641 million. We have to pay for the, you know, the difference, 9% of the difference between the state and the federal contribution. So that hasn't changed since we accepted the grant back in 2018. Have a whole lot more to add, other than the dollars that we're receiving here, this $1.641 million of federal funds, were funds that we weren't intended to get. And this was a competitive grant that was awarded to the city above and beyond the annual allocation that we get from the DOT. So even though this project was 8% over the engineer's estimate, still feel like, to some degree, we're playing with house money here, as it was a competitive grant that the city had went out and won a couple of years ago. We're excited to get the project started. The project, as it's put together right now, will be a two-year construction season of 2020 and 2021. The contract will be between the DOT and Edling Electric, and the DOT is just asking for the city's concurrence on this bid, as we have some, obviously, dollars in the contract. With that, I'd stand open for any questions.
And the soonest this is start is when?
Well, the DOT will have to go through their contracting process and get contract documents, insurance, and the like from the contractor.
You said 2020. Are we looking at June, July, August?
Well, there's an interim date, so that you can see the prime contractor is going to be an electrical contractor. Lighting is the big portion of this project, but the micro-surfacing needs to be done before July 1st. So they'll have to start at least by, you know, middle of June. That won't take very long, but they'll have to start in June at least, with lighting to follow.
And that's going to go from State Avenue all the way through town to 10th, and then the Loop going out to the Interstate, correct?
The Loop going out to Tiger Discount and the Interstate will happen in '21.
'21, okay.
So this basically goes up to the old come-and-go or Luckies now.
Right. That's going to be a tremendous project for the city.
A 56-year-old street light that'll get replaced here, I think it'll look really, really nice.
My only question would be for Mrs. Carlson. What did we originally budget for this project?
I can look that up real quick. I have my book here.
The 9%, Mr. Kubis, trying to detail, I'm looking through this invoice, that basically comes out to what above the original? Is it roughly $20,000, or is it more?
No, the engineer's estimate was 2.793, and the project came in at 3172. So it was a...
400?
300,000.
300,000, okay. So we're responsible for that 300,000?
It would be, right. The DOT capped their amount when we got the grant.
I think it's going to change the face of Dickinson, especially the downtown. So, Mrs. Carlson?
For the 2020 CIP budgeted projects, for the lighting, there's an extra $1 million added with the 1.6 that Mr. Kubis said. And then for the road diet reservice, there's another 3/4 of a million.
Okay, so we have enough to cover this? Any other questions? Comments? Look for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Steiner to approve the concurrence of award for the Villard Street lighting project.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Trustum. Any further questions, comments? Hearing non will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Kubis, you have one last item, a cost participation and maintenance agreement for the Exit 59 pedestrian bridge and trail.
Correct. Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Again, a standard cost participation and maintenance agreement with the DOT. Again, on the business loop, we're talking 80-10-10 cost sharing. One thing to note, the DOT, again, with the change of their policy, now bids trails, shared use paths as alternates. They bid an asphalt base and a concrete option. I was surprised to hear this, since the concrete trail that they built north of Interstate is concrete. But now, it might be that the asphalt trail comes in as a low bid. This agreement gives the city the option to select the concrete bid if it's acceptable to us. I think, based on bids we had seen recently on the Fairway Street project, I feel real confident that concrete will be, or maybe even cheaper than asphalt. I hope so, because I will definitely champion for a concrete trail. The bridge is going to be concrete, obviously, and then the trail will extend from the bridge south to 8th Street, just south of Sanford Clinic. So it'll make a nice connection to the residential neighborhood, State Edition, all the way up and over the bridge. So with that, I guess I would leave it open for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis on this cost participation agreement? And we have 10% of this, right? You said it's 80-10-10?
Correct.
So that's, I'm looking at total project of 2.1 million?
The screen doesn't want to, I think there's a sheet. The slide sheet has the numbers on it. And some of those dollars are 100% federal. Anything over the Interstate is 100% federal.
Any other questions for Mr. Kubis?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve the cost-sharing agreement. And a second. Any further questions? Comments? Hearing non will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kubis.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Public Works. Public Works Director Zurov, you have sewer camera van bid.
President Decker, Commissioner, thank you. First of all, I'd like to bring up that in 2019, our closed-circuit TV sewer camera had multiple issues. The hardware and software for that system, it was getting old, and so we did budget in 2019 $105,000 for that system. After looking at different systems and the existing trailer we had, we determined that we needed to look at additional, and an upgrade to that system. One of the things that's changed with our sewer system is it's not just in the streets anymore, it's in our granages. So we did find out, looked at Bismarck and Fargo, and they have like an F-50 chassis that includes the camera, the software, and in a package deal that we can use to TV the system. And so after we looked at some of that, in 2020, we budgeted $180,000 to include the F-50 chassis. We upgraded the software, the monitors, and the camera itself. And enclosed, you'll have the bid that came in from, we had one bid from Normont Equipment Company, and they had a total cost of $210,285. That included an F-50 chassis, the closed-circuit TV television pipe system, the software, the hardware, and it also included a system to TV some of our larger pipe, now that the system has increased in size dramatically from what we had prior. And that, as I said, that bid came in at $210,285. One of the things we're also looking at is we do clean about 50 miles of sewer line annually. We try to TV as many system lines as we can. We are looking at some of our older systems and trying to figure out a maintenance replacement schedule. And the key to that is the television, the televising of the system, and identifying that exact location and what segments of that system need to be replaced. And so the benefit of that, of course, is tremendous in not having to tear up as much street as you normally would have to define that exact location and the problems in that sewer system. So looking at what we budgeted in 2019 and what we have for 2020, including the encumbrance of $30,000 that Deputy City Administrator Carlson mentioned, we would recommend approving and accepting the bid from Normont Equipment Company for that system. That will be a F-50 chassis, an enclosure, the camera system, the software, the hardware, and it should be, should last the city quite a long time.
Any questions for Mr. Zurov?
Well, we already approved the encumbrance, so we approve this.
I guess my only question with the software, is there a subscription price as it comes with most software?
I think with this, we own the software. I think you can upload some different things, but this will have actually a location and a slope and everything, part of the software that's enclosed or with the system itself, not an annual subscription, but I know.
Any other questions? Not, we have a motion by Commissioner Steiner to approve this. Second by Commissioner Trustum. Any further questions, comments? Hearing non will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move into planning. City and county planner Josephson, you have an amendment to the zoning ordinance off-street parking. This is what I've been, I referenced earlier.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners, President Decker. Steve Josephson, planner. This was actually, this came to you last meeting, and it was tabled. We had, the primary reason this was, came up, what amendment came up, was to allow for administrative staff to do reduction of parking spaces for new developments and expansion of existing developments. There were, we took some comments from the commission that it was unclear in some areas whether this referred to development, or if it referred to, also referred to private parking on people's individual residential lots. So we took your comments, worked with Attorney Wanko, and made some changes to the proposed ordinance in front of you. And Section 39.09002 was changed to indicate that this section applies to non-residential zoning districts. A statement was added under exemptions that parking for non-commercial, personal, and recreational vehicles on a single lot in a residential zoning district is subject to Section 39.09.008, which is parking for personal and recreational vehicles. And another section within that, that parking for personal and recreational vehicles was changed so that there would be no change to the number of unlicensed vehicles that you could keep in your garage. It would remain a two. I think part of the issue was that we have a major part of this, which, of this chapter, which deals with development and redevelopment in the off-street parking lots, and then there's a section near the end of it, which is not really connected to that, which deals exclusively with what people can do on their residential lots. So we work those in and hope that those will address your concerns from the last meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Josephson. Any questions, comments? A lot of red lines. A lot of... If I'm correct, this ordinance will be, this will be 1688. And this is a first reading. We plan on having a public hearing on the second reading, okay?
Yes.
That's correct, Mr. President.
So any questions, comments? Okay, well, hearing none, I'd look for a motion on 1688.
Mr. President, move to approve. Ordinance 1688.
We have a motion to approve ordinance 1688 by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Steiner. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Josephson. We have a rezone for Lot, is it Lot 18? Or Lot 1B, Block 1 of the Come and Go Edition, and that'll be handled by Planning Director Hadley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is the second reading of ordinance 1687. As you stated, it's Lot 1B, Block 1, Come and Go Edition, the site of Luckies now. Zone changed to general commercial, basically fits in, like we said last time during the public hearing, there weren't any comments from the public on this. And staff would recommend approval of it based on continuity with the East and West properties.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Hadley? Now I'd look for a motion on 1687.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Trustum.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item up, we have nothing from Building Code and Enforcement this evening, so we'll move on to public issues of city concern, not on the agenda. If you have a concern about the city, or any item that was not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name, and let us know your concern.
My name is Jay Wilhelm. I'm from Dickinson Econo Storage. I have a letter...
Sure.
This is the area that I'm talking about, right here.
Okay.
What I have is a, basically a protest letter on a special improvement district 2001-2, which concerns, basically, if you know down 21st Street where Goodyear is, and then you go a block north, that's where Dickinson Econo Storage is, right north of where the old Bingo Place was. And I'm here to protest the sidewalk portion of it, because the letter will get into more details than what I am going to do here. I'll try to keep this short. Number one, we have a corner lot along Sims and 22nd Street, and just for our cost on that is going to be $48,000, or just shy of it. That's a lot of money, even though we own several of the properties on there. That's just a lot of money to be able to swallow this, especially, it will affect a lot of our customers, because we're going to have to raise prices in order to cover the cost. We can cover some of it, but not all of it. This isn't an industrial area. We built two additional buildings in that area about seven, eight years ago. We were not required to put in sidewalks at that point in time, because it was an industrial area. And it's also a dead-end area. If you look at the map, and if you ever want to drive up there, basically, that street is two blocks long. It's dead-ended by Sims, and it is also dead-ended on the other end of it. It's, like I said, it's two blocks east and west. There could be an argument made for putting sidewalks along the Sims side of it, just in case somebody wants to walk from Saks Motor all the way up to Walmart. My sister and I are up there numerous times a day, from early morning until late at night. We have security cameras on the property, so we view those multiple times a day. The only foot traffic that is on those two blocks is people that are parking there, that are walking across the street, because it's better parking on our side, and they walk across the street to the other properties that they work at on the north side. And that literally, anytime you drive up there in that two-block stretch, that is the only foot traffic up there. So, I guess if you want to take a look at it, read the letter, think of how it would be for you to have a business and to swallow a $48,000 tax bill over the next 10 years. If you have any questions, I'll take them now. If you think of anything later, my phone number is on there. I was not able to attend, due to some health issues of a member of my family, the meeting on the February 11th, which Mr. Kubis told me about, but I was not able to attend on that. And in case something ends up coming up again, I wanted to make sure that this letter was formally submitted to all of you, including Mr. Kubis. I know the deadline is on the 24th, but in case something else comes up, I got everything basically together tonight, and wanted to get it to you and make sure that, if there are any questions, like I said, either you can ask now. Feel free to call me at any time if I am in and around. Normally, I'd be able to meet you up there within half hour, 45 minutes.
Mr. Wilhelm, quick question of the goal area there, that city's requesting driveway eight inch. What is there now? Is it rocky?
Right now, it is a rolled curb. So, the entire thing around Sims and on the street side is all rolled curb with rock.
What about 22nd Street East? I'm seeing a long...
That is all, that, Sims and 22nd, all the way around is a rolled curb. It's not a straight curb like you have downtown. It's a rolled curb. Past that curb, there is rock on the entire property. And if you look, if you physically drive up there and look, the pictures kind of show the area, but if you physically drive up there and look, like I said, number one, it's dead-ended on two streets. I mean, it's two blocks long, and it's dead-ended on both sides. On the south side, all along 22nd Street, that's two blocks. Basically, it's a T-intersection. On the north side, there is, there is no way for the, I apologize, I don't know the street number, but there is no way for that street to even get through, because of the businesses, the way that's laid out. It's a very restricted area, and it's, like I said, it's primarily commercial area. There is no retail businesses in that area. I could conceivably see an argument being made on Sim Street, but I feel 22nd Street is a burden.
I tend to agree somewhat with that. You know, we just went through, you know, our off-street parking, and then there is a section where a hard surface, rock, gravel, would be, would be considered a hard surface. Why wouldn't that work in this situation here, where he has that rock, and that would be the hard surface that we're looking for? I would also agree that the community likes to walk, and that's why we're doing a lot of things with sidewalks. So, I'd also agree that, you know, the sidewalk, we're going to want to do some sidewalk. So, you know, but the one on 22nd Street there, you know, I'm kind of thinking maybe...
Well, have you, Mr. Wilhelm, have you met with Mr. Kubis, discussed this?
One time I met him in his office. That's when he told me about the meeting that was coming up on the 11th for, it was supposed to be an informational-type meeting. I was unable to attend that. So, I did have a phone call into him today to find out what had happened, but I could have missed the call, or maybe he didn't get to it yet, so I'm not sure.
So, if I, if I could, Mr. President, Mr. Wilhelm and I did talk. I think we had a good conversation, lots of questions, of course. It's, I don't know that it's the biggest assessment in this district, but it likely is. There's a couple of properties, so I haven't went through it exactly, but per owner, it's probably one of the biggest, if not the biggest assessments. There's about 530 total feet of frontage. Like you said, he's got frontage on 22nd and a corner around Sims. To the question of gravel, you know, gravel might work for a parking surface. When we talk about a sidewalk surface where we want folks to walk, should be ADA compliant, gravel really can't meet all those, all those needs, while they can work in a parking lot. I wouldn't want to shovel my gravel sidewalk, I guess, is the reason that we've concreted all those sidewalks. And this area, it is unique. It's general commercial by zoning, industrial somewhat by nature, just the way it's, the way it's been built up over the years, and the businesses that are there. One thing we did talk about, so the assessment that Mr. Wilhelm has, or the amount, anyway, is for eight-inch sidewalk, which is our standard for industrial, commercial properties. I think, and I would, I would say, I will say that this should have six-inch sidewalk. Well, we went across with a blanket of eight-inch sidewalk, because of the general nature of the neighborhood, the use of your property doesn't have heavy truck traffic coming in. There's really nowhere for heavy truck traffic.
Yeah, it does. I've got, if you read the letter, businesses across the street, one of them, it's a pump company, they get loads of steel in. The driveways on the north side have such a major ramp to them, that they cannot take their forklifts and unload, or load, stuff they're sending out. The 22nd Street, if you look at it, it has a convex hump in it about like this. The only place they have to load and unload their semis is basically on my property, because that's the only way they can park, they can park their semis kind of half on the street, and basically half where the sidewalk would be, and then they can take the forklift, drive it on my gravel, and come level with the bed, so they can actually unload their stuff. And I, multiple people that have, do that. I also get moving vans, moving semis. I get, right now, there's a small trucking company that does work for the oil field. They park their semis up there. You know, this is, I'm going to end up, over the years, with a lot of problems with this concrete breaking out. Even if we go with eight-inch, I still will, the guys that are using to load and unload from the businesses across the street, once you put concrete there, they're going to have to find another spot. I'm not going to take a chance.
Unless they can get some car sharing with you.
Mr. Wilhelm.
Replacement value.
Mr. Wilhelm, I have your property up, so I have a nice picture of that area, and understand where some of your complaints are coming from. Currently, you don't really have one access to your property either. People can come on to really anywhere off the road. Is that correct?
Yes.
To gain access to their storage units.
They, or the couple of heated shops that are up there, because you never know whether somebody is going to be pulling up with, like I said, a semi, a moving van, you know...
And, Mr. Kubis, you've reviewed this property, because right now, I mean, as it looks today, when I'm looking at it, I don't know how they could have a sidewalk here unless we closed off their ability to have entrance at really any of these sites, which I can see would be pretty problematic probably for a moving truck that's having to come in and turn on those tight corners to get to back...
Around, turn around the buildings and get to a specific area.
And I don't know if this is something we need to look at a little more, or...
I think, I think we're going to have a lot of case-by-case basis that have unique challenges, such as your property.
And this, and I see your point.
Yeah.
And like I said, there are no retail businesses up there. If you spend any amount of time up there, just like 7:30 to 8:00 in the morning, when everybody's going to work, you will see that on 22nd Street, especially since it's basically dead-ended on both street, both sides, there is no foot traffic up there. It's not, it's not an area that people go for walks in. Most people, probably, security-wise, wouldn't even want to walk through there. It's just not, it's not a well-traveled area.
On the north side of 22nd Street East, there's not much improvements to be made there, just some sidewalk. Is that all sidewalk already there?
No.
There's nothing there?
There are, there is a lot of...
Very wide driveways.
Very wide driveway.
Very small patches of grass. Honestly, I mean, I think maybe this needs to be visited, Mr. Kubis.
Well, that's why initially I said, I think you need to sit down and talk and...
The reason I brought that up is that I see where you want to infill with sidewalk on the north side there, which would make that one complete walking space, you know. And a lot of times, I think, you even see in other neighborhoods where the sidewalk is on one side of the street and not both. And why we couldn't see this as that situation there, where we have a sidewalk on the north side of the street, and the situation we have on the south side. If you want to walk from one end to the other, and to get up to Sims, you just may have to cross the street and go up to the north side of 22nd Street.
And that certainly addresses the walkability of the neighborhood, as lightly walked as it might be. I didn't feel that myself or our consultant should pick that side of the street, not the north side, but either side. If that's the route to take, I'm fine with that. I'm going to need some guidance and some help in picking the side.
Okay. I think we can provide that.
Okay. And thank you, Mr. Wilhelm, for coming in. I mean, he's been in my office, and we've had good conversations. Obviously, he got a, he got a letter in the mail with a pretty large amount that not anyone would be happy with, and he was very pleasant to deal with, and, you know, I think we'll come to an agreement here. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. The map, I, big map, I would like that.
All right. Thank you.
Like I said, my phone number is on there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wilhelm.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any public issues for the city that are not on the agenda?
Good evening.
Evening.
Mayor Decker and Commissioners. I'm Jennifer Schaefer with Tobacco Prevention at the Southwestern District Health Unit, and Danielle Romanician is also with Tobacco Prevention and with the Southwestern District Health Unit, and she is giving you some handouts. We wanted to address you today with the education on the federal law, tobacco age 21, that recently passed. Congress recently passed the bill that raised the minimum legal sales age for all tobacco products from 18 to 21 nationwide. This evidence-based prevention is finally in place at the federal level and with its enforcement structure. This helps states increase enforcement as well. Moreover, the passage of the law alone is insufficient to address the public health crisis that our kids and parents face. Other measures include flavor ingredient restrictions, an elimination of high-dose nicotine salt, and internet sales must be adopted. We wanted to give you some highlights on how this and how it affects Dickinson and our youth access ordinance. The federal law went into effect when the President signed it into law December 20th, 2019. A violation of federal law for retailers to sell any nicotine or tobacco products to anyone under the age of 21. The law does not phase in age restrictions that are currently 18, 19, or 20. The law doesn't preempt cities, counties, or states from passing enforcement, enforcing their own age restriction. The law penalizes retailer for selling tobacco products to youth. The law doesn't require that the states pass the law to 21, but that does mean that they risk losing a portion of their federal funding. The law does not address flavored tobacco or nicotine products, although the FDA issued an enforcement policy. Dickinson does have one of the strongest youth access to tobacco ordinance in our state. However, there are some outdated items within the ordinance that need to be addressed and updated. As you can see, Danielle has handed out the Tobacco 21 model policy, which gives a great direction on how we, as a community, can protect our youth from a lifelong addiction to tobacco. Currently, there are other communities in North Dakota that are adopting the tobacco to 21, and flavor restriction at a local level as well. Young brains are particularly susceptible to the addictive properties of nicotine. While it's a plus to have licensing... While it's a plus to have licensing requirements for retailers, I would ask you to consider increasing the amount to help with required tobacco compliance checks. We organize these checks with law enforcement in Dickinson, and in turn reimburse our police department $315 per establishment that is checked. And that's approximately 25 that are checked within Dickinson. We try to do those quarterly. Also, we know that our Surgeon General has referenced the vaping craze as an epidemic. We've seen this, as well as our school resource officers and school officials have stated. We have seen an increase of tobacco addiction among teens in our offices from age 13 and older that need our help. This, of course, is due to the vaping and e-cigarette marketing to our youth and the increased vaping use rate. The 2019 North Dakota Youth Risk Behavioral Survey shows the use of e-cigarettes increased from 11% to 33.1% among high school students, and that was just in a two-year period. So we would like to meet with the city officials, city council officials, to help with the needed updates for a strong, comprehensive policy. There is a first reading that was passed last June of 2019 with updates, which is a great start. The youth are 25% of our population and 100% of our future. Let's do the best to make our healthy community for our youth. Thank you for your time, and Danielle and I would like to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any communities that you know of that have ordinances that actually eliminate the sales of the vaping within the community?
We do, Valley City has restricted it, as well as, and Linton just passed theirs, as well as Valley City, Devil's Lake, and Linton.
The complete prohibit, they aren't allowed to sell any vaping products at all?
Go ahead.
I think that was your question.
Yes, yeah, exactly. I mean, why are we starting here when we want to end up here? And we're going to go all through all these steps. Why don't we just jump up here and say, no sales of vaping products within City of Dickinson?
That would be a proven effective method. That would.
Is that something you can find out for us and how to go about that there? And maybe with some help of a city attorney, see which direction we got to go? Because this is just going to be something that's just going to go up and up and up and up. We've seen it with the cigarettes, and it's costly, and.
Well, we saw how that worked in the 30s with alcohol. I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying. And we've spoke on the phone at length. I said, whatever the federal law is, I will support. Nothing more, nothing less. I don't know how the other Commissioners feel, but, and that is their way to vote. I appreciate all the information, but at this time, I think there's federal measures being put in place, and that's what I'm willing to support. If the state changes the law, you know, we have to support that. But I've told you, I, we're all over the board with what we consider kids in this country and what we consider adults in this country, and it's getting ridiculous. And it's getting out of hand, and in my case, it's just getting out of hand. At one point, you're an adult. You make adult decisions, and there's adult repercussions. I'm sorry, but that's how I feel. I don't know how the rest of the Commissioners feel.
I'm looking on the side of not only of what the illness and the death that it causes at the end, is that they're asking for more money right now, and so that's just the start of asking for money. And we've seen it with the tobacco side, it's every year, more money, more money. And by the time we get to where I see this going, maybe it's a year from now, five years from now, whatever, there's millions of dollars throughout the country, billions of dollars spent on this here. And we're going to be part of that, billions of dollars that are going to be spent on this here stuff, you know. So for me, if we can skip everything in between it, we've been told from first grade, smoking is bad for you, you know, apparently they don't listen, but whatever. But if it's not available in the City of Dickinson, I have no problem with that.
Mr. President.
Mr. Trustum.
Thank you for your presentation. Can you tell me exactly what you're advocating today?
Well, we'd just like to be able to sit down with the Commissioners and the Attorney and Joe Gah, and to come up with a comprehensive policy that would help the youth of the City of Dickinson. You know, it is a health concern. As you saw in the Policeman's Report, how tobacco affects our students here. They are busy every day confiscating tobacco products, mainly vaping right now. So we'd just like to sit down, see if there's some way we can update the ordinance. Dickinson does have a very strong youth access ordinance. However, like I mentioned, some things are kind of antiquated. They need updating, just some wording, and go forward from there. So it is, it is about the youth and the health, and education is our job.
Are vaping products and, are they available online?
They are available online. When you put in to purchase it, you do, in some respects, have to put your driver's license on there and give that to them, but there are ways that the students get around that. Do you know anything else on that? So, yes, that is, that is an issue, too.
This is something that, you know, a person just thinks of and wants to do. I mean, there's dry counties in this country that don't serve alcohol, but yet the government lets them make those decisions. You know, having a dry county as far as vape sales, it's not going to be unheard of, you know. And I just want to avoid that hundreds of thousands of dollars of steps that I know where it's going to go, and I think you know where it's going to go. Eventually, that's where you're working to it.
President Decker and Commissioners, if I can chime in here a little bit. This is probably pretty timely, because actually, at the next meeting, we will be bringing you an ordinance revision that includes many of the things that were proposed in the first one and the federal legislation. I think it will be a pretty good win for the advocacy groups and also a balance for our business community. And so that discussion is at the next meeting. So you'll have your chance.
All right. That'll be the revisioned second, so it'll be the second reading of that.
Well, actually, it's had some, with the federal legislation, and we'll just start over at the first.
Okay.
Mayor Decker and Commissioners, is that something that we could get a copy of, Mr. Gah?
Yes.
Beforehand?
It's our intention to meet with you before the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public have any concerns not on the agenda? Anyone? Seeing no one else has any concerns not on our agenda, I'll move on. I'll close the public issues portion. Commissioners, are there anything that you wish to discuss that's not on the agenda? I was, the only thing I was going to bring up was the very thing we just discussed, so I don't have anything. Anyone else? Not, look for a motion to adjourn.
Some have.